Welcome everyone, this is the Town of Rutland, Vermont Select Board Meeting for May sixth, twenty twenty five. It is six P M. We have four out of five Select Board Members present. Uh, Joe D'Nardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell. Remind me next time to start from your end and work back. Yeah, okay. Um, plus numerous Department Heads. So please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have two sets of minutes in our packet for Select Board Meetings. Start with April twenty second. And let's see. We were all present. Motion's been made to approve. And seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries four, zero, one abstention. Okay, we have the minutes for the April twenty ninth Select Board Meeting. This was the special one where we did a few things, but it was primarily to meet with the Regent. There's Kurt.
It's in a hurry.
So. Okay, motion's been made to approve the April twenty ninth minutes. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Um, Kurt, do you want to vote? We can reopen briefly and allow you to vote on the April twenty second minutes.
Aye.
Okay, so the vote is now.
Everybody else.
Everybody. Thank you.
Some major complaint.
Police Committee Minutes aren't what we vote on. So. Approval of orders. We have in front of us.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the orders.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion, additions, corrections, deletions? If not, all in favor of approving the orders, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Board Member Announcements. Are there any? Nope. Okay. Uh, update from Select Board Chair. Just a few things first, the reminder that Circle Articles are due by May fifteenth. That is the last edition to go to the press before the summer. So everyone, if you have an event coming up during the summer or something that will occur in early fall before the next edition of the Circle, please get your article in. Please get your articles in anyway. Let people know what's going on. Um, next, um, next week, Bill, would you please put on the agenda for our next meeting that we will need to approve the scholarships? Um, the Scholarship Committee received a whole bunch of packets on Friday and will be meeting to go over. These are the Rutland Town's, um, scholarships that voters approved, so more to come on that. The Fire Committee probably should have a meeting. I know we were holding off because um, Chief Clerk wanted to bring the bylaws to us, but just a thought that perhaps it would be better to have a meeting before the close of the fiscal year anyway. So, okay. Uh, and Townwide Celebration. Um, are we probably in the planning stages, but that would be a good um, one to have front and center on the Circle, front page, reminding people of what it is.
You're listening there?
Right over. Townwide Celebration, we need a block or something big on the front page of the Circle to advertise.
That would be Bill this year, and then I will take care of that to that.
Okay.
Bill's still in charge.
You guys have worked that out. Okay. All right. Okay, and that's all I had. And moving right along. Um, are there any questions from the floor or public comments? From anyone? Public comments from anyone?
Do you want to choose?
No, okay.
The recreation?
Well, run through our Department Heads. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right.
Someone's got a haircut.
Some people did. Um, we started a little project, uh, uh, last week, um, rebuilding the sandbox. Um, the, the box that the residents get their sand out of. It's uh, the original one's pretty beat up and tattered, so we took it out and we're putting up something a little bit more rugged and hold a little bit more material. Um, we're on a, pretty much a regular routine basis now of flushing the manhole in front of sports cuts or clips or I don't even whatever the name of it is. Uh, basically because we don't have anything coming, more or less coming across the road. So they've got a forced main that goes in there and it, there's not really enough volume to push the solids down, so we have to go down there once a week with a tank of water and throw a couple hundred gallons down it and get it to go down someplace better. So that's a, pretty much a, a regular maintenance issue right now. Uh, we started doing some of the MS four stuff, maintenance stuff, uh, uh, so we went to Winridge and the, the Czech Dam, the, the Stormwater Czech Dam had a bunch of, uh, inch, inch and a half pine, white pine trees growing in it that really didn't need to be there, so we went up there and cut and chipped a bunch of trees, probably a hundred of them actually. And, um, while we were there, we started kind of looking at the uh, stormwater infrastructure and I didn't really have much of a clue as to what that was, so we opened up all of the basins. We're gonna have to get in there and get them all cleaned out this summer. I've got A one scheduled for the twenty twentieth and twenty first of this month, I guess. Uh, to clean basins and stuff and then we actually went up the next day and, um, I mapped it all out, so I know kind of where everything goes and how it runs now, so. Spent a little bit of time up there working on, uh, some of this MS four stuff, trying to get ahead of it before Andres and crew show up and give me a, a list of things that I need to do that hopefully I have done before we get to that point. Um, a bit of bad news and a bit of good news. Um, I got an email today from V Trans, from, uh, Brian Sanderson. Our Structures Grant for the, uh, culvert on Stratton Road was approved. Just gotta go through their process to make it all official and everything, but they did turn down the Class Two paving grant, which was that upper portion of East Pittsburgh Road. So I it's not the end of the world. We're still gonna do East Pittsburgh Road because it needs it. Um, so I had intended, I had, the way I had it figured, we could do that. Columbus, David, Susan, I could do just about everything up there but two streets with, out of my regular paving budget. I'm gonna have to back some of that out of there. I might be able to do about half of it this year and I'll just do the other half next year so we can do East Pittsburgh Road this year and get that done. So it's in the works.
How much was the Structures Grant for, dude?
Uh, five hundred thousand.
They gave us a full five hundred?
I, well, I haven't seen it yet, but that's what, that's what we applied for and it didn't say it was gonna be anything different. Uh, twenty percent, so it'll be a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
We'll have to figure that in somewhere.
We've budgeted for it?
Time frame.
Uh, we've got till December of next year. Twenty six. Yeah, so we got, I, I did it that way because I knew it was by the time these things are approved, and it's always this time of year, there's no way we're gonna get it put out and done this year, so. Um, that gives us time to kind of budget for it.
Put it out to bid.
Put it out to, we gotta, we gotta get it to easements.
Yep.
Um, and get it out to bid and all of that stuff, so.
Twenty, next summer's.
It'll be next summer's project, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it's good. Into the little bit of, uh, little bit of fun stuff. Uh, green up. We collected the bags the other day. We got eighty-nine of them.
Okay.
Um, Larry has been taking bags for the last two weeks, I think, so I don't know what the official last number will be, but.
Oh, it's, so did your crew green up part of Creek Road? Somebody cleaned up my road.
I don't know who did that, but we got called. Or no, somebody, s- I think somebody sent a text message or an email or something. Uh, two weeks ago and said there's a bunch of bags down there, so we went down and picked them up, and I think we got six or seven or eight bags down there.
That was Mike and my son.
We thought that was you.
No, I do the upper part. Somebody have done it, but there's, people have started throwing it out again. If people do, because of the rain, if, if they do some green up this coming weekend or so, will you still accept the green bags? Okay. All right, good.
Yep, that's not a problem. Just let us know where they are. We had uh, I don't know, I think I had five or six different phone calls, messages on the answering machine over the weekend for locations. We just went and picked everything up.
Good, thank you.
Um, Katie is at our place right now, putting together a tree sale. Um, she's actually, she's kind of ahead of schedule and she was working there pretty much all day today by herself, but she's, uh, she's actually gonna send out some emails and get some people maybe come in early and pick up their stuff, so. Uh, she said she had like a hundred and twenty orders
Good.
for trees, so that's, that's a pretty successful thing.
Yeah. This is the, uh.
I never can get the name right.
Rutland Natural Resource Conservation District.
That one.
Um, I'll be helping on Friday and Saturday.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's, it'd probably be pretty much done by the time you get there, but.
I'm planning on it.
That should work out. Um, this one is a question more than anything. The gentleman owns the, uh, building down on South Main Street or Seven that burned this past week. He also owns the Green Mountain Credit Union Building.
Mm-hmm.
Apparently sometime in the past, his father had a problem with the well. And he put in some kind of janky system that was run from inside the garage that is a heap at this point. So he would like to get on municipal water somehow. Obviously, there isn't any, so I guess the, I told him his best option right now would be get ahold of Parkers or something. They, they put a, a pump inside the building and pump into a tank and then pump from the tank out some. So they got some kind of temporary tank set up for the credit union right now, uh, and he is looking at rebuilding something on that corner. So he'd like to get municipal water. So I guess the question is, is there any appetite from the town to pursue any kind of water system, something down there, which obviously needs to be looked at, but.
How far is the?
There's water.
There's water at Honda.
Sure Honda.
Is there Seward Road?
That's, that comes off of Seward Road.
Yeah, that's Seward Road. And then there's Co- there a line that goes up Coal River Road?
No.
No, no, there's a Dell Stanley, comes crosslots from Chase Avenue off of Curtis in, into a Dell Stanley.
So we gotta get from a Dell Stanley down.
Right.
That, yeah, but the problem with that is it's a small main.
That's, that's a six inch main.
So if you were trying to do fire hydrants, you can't do them on it. They won't allow you to do.
But if we, if we pushed it from, because that's a twelve inch main on on Seward Road.
Right.
If, I don't know what that is in front of.
Sure.
Sure, if that's, that's a, oh, yeah, because.
When they built that, that was, so we asked for that when, when they were gonna run water there, they came to the town and I asked them when they built that to put a hydrant out front, in order to put a hydrant out front, they had to run a main. I don't know if the town contributed to that. We might have contributed some to the upgrade from, because there was no water, so there's no water on the east side of Route Seven down there. This is the issue.
For what stretch?
Huh? From Coal River Road to Seward Road, well, to Shira Honda.
The Shira Honda.
On that east side in the town, so.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna consider doing anything, shouldn't it be for the whole stretch that doesn't have water?
Right, you would, uh, the ideal thing would be to hook on at Shira Honda on the eight inch main and go north. But the city doesn't like the dead end mains, so ideally you would end up tying that into either the main that goes to webs. Because I think that dead ends.
The main that goes to webs, I was wrong when I was talking to you about that the other day. That comes in on their far southeast corner.
Yep.
By the railroad tracks. So it's like, that's not a thing. That's, that's it's, it's not a thing to get there.
So if you wanted to loop it, we'd have.
Starbucks pulling off that from webs?
I don't know that.
Because I'm trying to think how they're getting their water.
Or Friendly's do.
That's what, they just tied Starbucks tied to whatever Friendly's had, but I don't know where that came from.
I don't know that.
And I don't know.
That came from across the, from the sixteen, if that came across.
I don't know. I, s- something tells me that at one point way back in the early days, Friendly's directional drilled that. But that might have been for the sewer too, because I I, I don't, that was twenty-five years ago.
We can figure that out, Bill. Right, we can tell you.
So is that, that question should perhaps be sent to the, the Highway and Utilities Commission.
Our, our, our Public Works Division now.
Yeah.
I mean, we, you mean ideally what you're gonna end up doing, you're gonna get somebody like Otter Creek to come in, they're gonna do like they did on Ranbury Road. They're gonna propose what this is gonna be the cost and say, okay, I mean, I didn't think Ranbury Road was that expensive really to run that main down there.
No.
Um, and it, and it's, and just about everybody down there's hooked on it now.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't know what the Sunoco Station, where their water comes from. I don't know what any of those are down through there or friend or, I don't know.
That's something we'll have to figure out.
And I think we did an inquiry before we built the Ranbury Road one, asking the owners if they would hook on.
Yeah.
And most of them said yes, well in advance.
I think just everybody pretty much is now down there. So I think that would be the step is to see what's there in the ground now and where these folks are getting water and then you know, because I do know that Shearer wanted water and I think they were just gonna run whatever up there and I asked them, you know, if we do it, I, and I just don't remember if the town got involved and, you know, helped offset the cost of the bigger main, because the NFPA doesn't allow you to put hydrants on six inch mains anymore. So you have to, you know, run a main, so. There, there would be a way to come up there. Ideally, you take the eight inch main, extend it to Coal River Road and then go up Coal River Road and tie it to a Dell Stanley with eight and tie to their six and that would be
That would satisfy everything.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be.
It would get rid of that, that, the two dead ends and it would give you
right.
Fire, fire down there.
And, and I, it's funny because when I heard what was going on and I was thinking, well, they're only gonna have so much off the hydrant by Shearer, so they're gonna either run lines across the road, which they ended up having to do.
Yeah, we laid fourteen hundred feet from Sheer up there.
Yeah.
And that was some gross water that came out of.
Because it's a dead end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
That was some gross water that came out of that first, but it's.
Clear now, ain't it?
It supplied a deck gun and a, it supplied a deck gun and a two and a half.
Because the, the line coming down Seward Road is tied to the sixteen inch main, right?
Yes, yes.
Sure it is.
Yeah, so.
It goes across.
All, yes. Yeah, so it's.
Doable.
Yeah.
I want to look into it.
Yeah, you know, it's one of the.
But now that they're better off dropping a submersible pump down the well.
Yeah, well, that's what I told him. Like, you gotta get ahold of Parkers or somebody that does well stuff and get, because this is I told him municipal government, grind slowly. Don't think this is gonna happen next week. It's not.
No, okay, it's not.
Yeah, and I do believe that it's a little further south, it's gonna kind of take precedence over any other construction right now.
Yes.
But it's a goal to, to, to look forward to.
But you know, i- if that's something that we wanna look at, I mean, it's gonna take time to do the
Sure.
The investigating work to figure out who's got what and what it's gonna take to get there and all of that, so.
Shouldn't be too bad digging. And is there a sidewalk? There's a sidewalk on that side.
Yeah, yeah.
All the way up through.
Yeah, so they could either put it under the sidewalk or beside it.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it is now, but, um.
Beside it.
Is it beside it?
Yep, yeah, they went between the sidewalk and Toyota, I think, you know, right up through there.
That's quite a long while ago.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so we'll look into it.
Yeah, okay.
We've got a committee working on it.
And that was, the only other thing I have is letter number A.
All right, action item A, discuss the purchase of an excavator for the Highway Department.
We talked about water instead of sewer.
I know, that was, that was good.
So looking, looking now that we got the East Pittsburgh Road paving fell through, um, you know, I'd like to be able to pave as much as we were planning on paving without that grant and use that from your carryover. And your carryover is gonna get skinny, especially if we gotta come up with a hundred and twenty thousand for a box culvert. So I don't know if we're gonna be able to pull it off this year or not. Is there it's the only issue I'm seeing right now, that three hundred and thirty grand's gonna go quick. Um, I mean, we have a okay setup now renting, so we might just have to keep on doing that for the summer and.
And we've budgeted for the rental, yeah.
Yeah, so we have spent how much Dave?
Oh, forty-two thousand since I've been here, so.
Some two and a half years, so we're spending twenty a year. So to, to add, I think that was one of the questions, was the cost effectiveness of.
Yeah.
The purchase of an ex, you know, the machine will be a, um, it's a long-term investment, it's fifteen, twenty-year machine, so, you know, you're talking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a machine and a trailer over twenty years, we could conceivably spend four hundred thousand to rent a machine. So just to give you an idea that, you know, we, that part of it, um, depending on what we wanna do with the paving, whether we wanna take the carryover and put it into paving. Um, what would that section of East Pittsburgh Road cost to be paved?
Um, uh, well, I asked them to give me a price. I haven't got a price yet, because we're gonna reclaim it instead of mill it. The reclaiming is gonna be a little bit less, be, you know, I don't know seventy-five, eighty cents less per square yard, but you're gonna double your asphalt, so I think it was like a hundred and I, I wanna say a hundred and fifteen, but.
It's close.
I think it was something like a hundred and fifteen to do it.
Hundred and fifteen, hundred and thirty, something like that.
It wasn't a hundred and thirty, it was in the teens, but.
My question to you is this. And I think you do terrific work. My concern right now is we have so much money going out. Could you hold on for another year?
I can hold on forever.
The idea Sharon is it's just more convenient and actually more cost effective.
I understand convenient. I also understand we have taxpayers that have, are, are having hard times paying their taxes, and if he can hold out a, a, at least another year that would give us a break.
It's that, that this isn't a tax burden at this point. We have the money. It's whether we spend it to buy a machine or buy paving. Those are our choices, you know, we.
Or a box culvert.
Or, or put it toward, you know, the box culvert. You know, we're gonna have to come up with a hundred and twenty, so we'll either have to put that in the budget for one year. Which is, of course, you know, sizable now, or see what we have, um, available to us when we make our decision in October, November.
Well, would, would that be something that could be taken, the, the bridge out of depreciation?
The bridge, no, usually not, but that could be.
Because it's a structure, so there's, we don't have a and that's something we could always look at someday, is some sort of structured depreciation account, but we don't have that.
So would this qualify, that would qualify for capital improvement funds if we had them.
Yeah, we've never done that before though.
I mean, that's a long.
Yeah, no, we've pretty much kept to doing it within the highway budget.
Yeah.
Because you guys have the one big advantage, which is the carry.
The carry, but I'm just thinking if you.
That's what, that's what we've always done with the carryovers. You try to to, to build that up for these budgets, so you're not getting these big swings in the budget.
Basically six, one half to the, the other. If, if Highway didn't have that, that money would have been swept into the capital improvement fund and that's where it would have been. This way, it doesn't get lost on other projects, it stays within Highway, but I was just thinking if you wanted, if we're trying to avoid additional taxation for a hundred and twenty thousand dollar share of a culvert, would it be prudent, you know, basically, we would be spending, the bulk of the, the capital improvement, it comes from the excess one percent money. So we'd be using that one percent money to fund a culvert. That'd be something to think about. It, it, to me, it fits within that you know, usually we put it toward buildings or we did buy two highway trucks with it. This would not be a stretch to put it toward a culvert and not have to to Sharon's point, add that hundred and twenty into the taxes, so.
So could I just run some of those numbers back to make sure I got them right here? There's three thirty in the carryover now. You're talking about spending maybe half of that on paving?
Or maybe a hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty, yeah.
Round number, a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
And then maybe another a hundred and twenty.
For the box culvert.
Culvert. And it would not, if you did both of those, you wouldn't have enough left to do.
What we, what we could do now, because we have this money as soon as we get the go ahead on that grant, we could get those easements busted out and we could put it out for like a September, September twelfth or October completion date, and we could probably get that box culvert done this fall.
So, uh, so if you do both of those.
Go out, you know.
Did both of those from carryover, you wouldn't have enough to do the excavator. If we put it on you know, in the next budget, then obviously that, that's more on the taxpayer unless we go with a one percent, which right now we don't have that money, but of course we're approaching the end of fiscal year. Uh, we'll know then, I mean, but that would be, you know, one of many things we would be considering, one of which might be just playing that on the tax rate or fact that we have these bonds still and can continue to pay on the bonds from some of that rather than you know, because otherwise that's gonna be hitting taxpayers. So I would rather hunt on this for now. Maybe take to a point of, if you're saying you're spending twenty a year on the rental and the machine's gonna last twenty years, then you're gonna spend more on the rental than you would if you bought it, probably. But, you know, I mean, and Kurt, do you agree with those numbers or do you?
I mean, we could I mean, we could probably get the rental down a little bit if we you know, lined up some good projects and busted them out and return the machine and.
Long as it doesn't rain every day, but.
If we, if we can get JR to do weekly rentals with us and, you know, we can blow, blow out a week's worth of projects and bring it back and then blow out another week's worth of projects, you know.
Usually rent it what date, by the month or by the week?
By the month.
Yeah, so we might be able to get JR to do by the week with us and then we can
be, um.
You know, use it you know, more hours and out out of the rental and might be able to get that down a little bit.
I, I really don't wanna end up adding another six-figure item to our to our budget.
Yeah, you know, the, the, the idea was to not create any additional burden and, and by using the carryover, it would, and we just decide whether we wanna do paving or buy a machine. That's, that's, that's pretty much what the, what the, there's gonna be some dip into that three hundred and thirty to offset, um, overtures in the highway budget, mostly for maintenance on the equipment this year, because, you know, they had a
Yeah.
Just had a, one of those winters when a lot of stuff breaks and, and so there's, there's an amount will come out of there, so realistically, there's probably gonna be about three hundred thousand there, that's when you.
Yeah, that's probably fair.
You know, so.
In, in my opinion, the paving needs to get done. The Upper, Upper East Pittsburgh Road's gone.
Yeah, no, that's, like I said, I, I'm just, that's, that, that came out of that uh, Class Two grant, I said no, so I just went back and that piece and put it over here and then, you know, I haven't, I haven't even sat down and looked at how much of that development I can do yet. I just, I just, I got ahold of Tim and just said I need some, some different numbers.
A year and a half project, two.
I mean, I figured that, it was, it was gonna be two years up there either way.
Right.
So, no matter what.
Development, need, need to, I mean, there's, there's not a chunk of asphalt up there bigger than that.
By time, you know.
It's all cracked, hate to crap.
Pittsburgh?
Well, no, the, the whole development up there.
Oh, it's, it's not that bad, but.
Last time I was up in there, it was like, pooh, man.
It, it needs, there's some streets that need some love.
It's the Rutland City standards.
When you, when I mean, the grant is kind of what, you know, if we'd have got the paving grant, but I guess we were optimistic to get it two years in a row.
Well, then we got Structures Grant too, so.
And that, I think that's really what it was. We hit him for half a million for Structures and then.
Which we'll take.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
And then I went after him for another hundred thousand for.
Over, it's getting pretty junky down there.
It's bad.
Yeah.
Let me ask, well, all of you, the farmer's wife question, I used to go to auctions with Harold all the time to look at. Used equipment, is there any such thing for used highway equipment, and can you get? A deal on a.
You could, you could buy a V-Trans um, like a V-Trans trade in, a V-Trans, you could buy something from the surplus auction. Straight direct from V-Trans.
Maybe we should be keeping an eye on that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what they've had pop up, V-Trans unfortunately runs them.
And that, that's, that's way competitive, like people come from other states for that, that's, cause I think Vermont is one of, there's only like. Two or three states in the country that still do uh V-Trans, like a a state municipal auction.
Right.
There.
We're one of them.
And we're one, and they come from everywhere.
They're opening up now municipalities can buy direct before the auction.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they've been starting to do that the last couple of years, but I don't know what they've had. The issue with V-Trans machines is they're bigger than what we need normally.
Per- personally, not, not that I, you know, the the truck purchase was, got us through. And got our foot in the door and it's, and it worked, but I have a, you know, this. Things to go wrong with little dinosaurs that bothers me to buy a used one.
Well, that's, that's the case in any.
Right, and I'm just thinking, if we're gonna spend our money, you buy a machine that comes with a few year warranty and it, we're not pressed, I mean. Dave has been doing projects, one of the things we have been saving is um, Dave hasn't been hired outside contractors as much to do. Culvert work, they're doing their, you know, the renting machine doing the work, we have the trucks now, we have the 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 crew, so they can do that pretty good, they've got. Enough guys to do flagging and and everything, so this is just like the next step is. You know, I I guess I'd like to see it done now, but there are maybe other pressing things, you know, the road build might be more pressing at this point. Um, and we can continue down this road, the culvert thing, I think once. This fiscal year ends, we know what we have for funds, we can decide how to make our, come up with our portion of the grant. For the our one twenty on that, whether it's, you know, partially through the budget, partially through the capital improvement. Some other thing, but um.
You know, we can always put the excavator on the ballot and march and let the people decide.
You could, you, and that's, that's another option.
That's the traditional.
Do that.
No, but that's the traditional way of how we, the town had always. Anytime the town wanted to add equipment to a fleet, they always put it on the ballot.
Yeah, and then, then you've, well, but not in my time on the board, I don't think we've put.
Maybe not in your time, but historically. Appreciation's only to replace existing.
Well, that's because we changed the wording on it.
But no, it's always. Yeah, but that, it's, that's what it's always been directed at.
Yeah.
And anytime we wanted to add a piece of equipment, it always went on the ballot.
Or we found.
I think even, I think even the fire trucks, when they wanted to add.
When we added, when we expanded to one more, we asked for the one, I believe we did.
That was like fifteen years ago, the modern group of voters are going to be wondering, why are we approving? Paying both for a depreciation account and a new equipment fund, so we would have to be able to explain that, I heard your explanation.
Yeah, it's, it's because we're adding to the fleet.
So, well, let's see what happens between with our, cause we've got the last quarter of one percent tax coming in, we've got. Um, see what our carryover looks like, we've got other expenses um.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this is not life and death, if there was a project they needed to do that was gonna cost the town a bunch of money to. Rent a piece of equipment, I guess that could be more.
Yeah.
Forceful, but given, you know, that that. Structures grant is more valuable to the town than the class two paving grant, so. And and if Dave wants to do that upper section and put that money, we have it, I mean, that's there, and I think. That'll be fine, and Wilkes is not gonna be upset with doing more paving.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I I should have that number by the end of the week, I would think, it's.
Yeah, we can get.
Numbers in, yeah.
Yeah.
So the answer on A is no for now.
Yep.
Till we understand better what the end of the year numbers look like anyway, and I trust you folks would bring it up again if you felt.
Well, yeah, I mean, in the long run, purchasing a machine over renting a machine is is the better financial goal, but. If we're stretched to ten now, then twenty thousand for this year looks a lot less than a hundred and forty.
Yes.
So I, and I, you know.
And I think you're gonna have fun with it, with these Pittsburgh Road, cause there are holes all over the place.
Oh, I know, and we fill them and they're back tomorrow.
Right, exactly.
They're, they're just.
We've got anything more for Dave and the highway folks?
Um, the um, we've, we've approved his purchase of the truck, right, I believe. Um, we had the money, the two hundred and thirty four thousand.
Thought we voted on it.
So it's all good and and, well, I just wanna make sure that.
Two weeks ago?
A month ago.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
Wouldn't be in these minutes, but we can take a quick look at the minutes and make sure we've approved it.
Dave.
Uh, I don't.
You guys for minutes? I go online and look at them quite often, but I.
Well, I was gonna come in and, and look, this is a March.
That goes right under there.
Oh, it would have been.
So just so you know, that's why that.
For Dave.
Um, and. They drained some of it into our.
The April eighth?
I'm looking at. Last March on twenty five.
Yeah, it might have been the week it was.
But it gets it.
After that, is it twenty fifth or eighth?
I mean, he grew up there, so he knew. And it comes down, down through um countryside estates.
Number six.
Right under the road. Big problems right in there.
For how much? And the money to come from.
If you're gonna go over and Steve can show.
So usually I do it, I throw mine here, so if something comes up.
Well, you know where mine is anyway.
So the answer is yes, we've approved.
You're all set.
We've approved your truck.
I just want, I I know the clock starts at some point.
Uh, so it basically started yesterday.
Okay.
Because they assigned us a VIN number yesterday.
Okay.
So.
Awesome.
With the, you know, and then I don't know, you can ask that, the warranty on the vehicle, when does it start? When we register it or when we start the process?
I will ask them, but it should be once we take delivery.
Yeah.
Okay, well, because.
Make sure of that.
Um, cause I think if you register that now. Then that goes in somehow with the company, and then it becomes, it starts when you register it, I think, but we want, we don't wanna lose. Fourteen months warranty.
No.
Cause we got, you got the seven year extended warranty.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, anything else for Dave?
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Dave.
Have a good night.
You too. Dumas, but it looks like Ted Washburn.
And on vacation.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hi.
So we'll start with the stats for April.
Yes, please.
Uh, so the top sheet is lin sheet, which is what seventy nine. South end cases out of a total of the hundred and fifty nine calls we had, so it was fifty percent.
Okay.
Of our calls are out of south end. Um. The other stats were the hundred and fifty nine calls and thirty nine traffic stops. Nothing shattering as far as the calls that we're going to.
So.
Is Alderman's bringing it?
Percentage, does it include, I'm, I'm not doing my math quickly, does that include the thirty nine stops?
Uh, no, so I subtract, so overall, it was because of Alcor start to call when we do a car stop. There was a hundred and ninety eight in total.
Okay.
So we subtract the car stops, cause I don't, don't need to have those in there.
Got you.
Um. So on this page here. You have a line for Green Mountain Plaza, but then you have separate for Hanfords and Michaels and. Cause they're all a different address through E nine one one, so two ninety six US Route seven south is the Plaza. But three hundred is Staples, three eighteen is Hanfords, three twenty is Dix, and they all have to be. Correctly put in for location through E nine one one.
What is, what is the Plaza? What is that?
So that's anything basically in the parking lot.
Oh.
Parking lot doesn't have a number.
Part, whatever, anything that's not in one of the stores, we classify it as the Plaza, out front, out back.
Is the Cortina operating as a hotel?
Yes, it is, and state police have been down there for one welfare check last night. They're open to, my understanding is they're open to paying cat, paying customers.
Yeah, I drove around and it looked pretty empty, but there were a couple of cars parked out front.
I understand the state police also has to visit the mall.
Uh, we've done, we visited the mall, the state police have visited the mall, um, I know. It reached out, they said they were going to fix it, but I don't know if they have or not.
Uh, they said they put plywood up, and they are addressing the cars that are not supposed to be there.
Yeah, um, so you've had calls about kids breaking down everything going in. We're not going in because that's just a nightmare and a half trying to do that, and so we'll wait. Nothing ever came of the kids coming out of there, and then state police went up for something similar. Kids going into the building, but there was a report of an assault that was unfounded. And then there's camp, there were campers and other things like that.
I did see the campers up there.
Yeah. So. I did respond to the two fifty permit thing too.
Everybody heard it was getting lower down, they were.
You didn't.
I don't know, well, just, just the bill, he had sent it out to say if there were any issues, I said. See any issues.
Hold off until you actually see the permit application, that's actually for all of the department heads. Um, you can't really fill out a municipal impact questionnaire until you see the whole of the Act two fifty application. Cause you gotta see the narrative, the maps don't do it by themselves, so you'll have to do another one, so just fair warning.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay.
About the stats. The new cruiser, the equipment that we were waiting on has been shipped, and I talked to them today. They are getting their fleet guys ready, so when the stuff comes in, they can just immediately start working on our car. Rough timeframe, hopefully end of the month. Oh.
You get the new ones.
Yeah, I think that's how it's supposed to play out. I think that's how it's supposed to play out, but.
Okay, we'll see.
Um, so there was that. Uh, Kerry asked for some clarification, so in the.
We've got a. Finance Personnel Committee meeting coming up. That, that's the clarification you were asking about?
No, 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 this has to, so at the last police committee meeting, we talked about the Motorola bill being higher than we anticipated, but. It's not, we're not gonna go over budget in total, but we would go over the equipment line.
Mm-hmm.
We had, there was the mention that, yes, we understand you can't go over your whole budget, but Kerry asked for clarification to make sure we had approval to purchase the amount. Because it is eight thousand six hundred nineteen dollars.
Um, was it in the last batch we just signed?
No, it wasn't.
It was already, so wait, this is for the, for the new contractor?
So this was the con, this was the contract that is for our body cameras and for our in cruiser cameras. So we budgeted for the contract for the body cameras, but not the in cruiser cameras.
Right.
Now is if, that was on me.
But, uh, the contracts, were they already approved?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just a matter of, it's just a budget staff, I think it was already approved.
Okay.
Concept.
Gonna show an overage in that line item, but hopefully your entire budget will be.
We will be under.
Should be okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a little discussion about that at the police committee meeting, discussed the agreement with Motorola watch guard for the body camera system. Is that the one?
Yes.
Combined storage invoice was received this year for body camera and cruiser video, total budget for this year should not be overspent.
Correct.
So we didn't feel the need to make any unless. You feel the need for us to, if he's within budget over on one line but within budget.
Started because you had to ask them about.
Yeah.
The way that it was set up, first of all, so that it rolled itself into other questions.
Okay, as, as it often does. I'm glad you're asking, thank you.
So there was that, and I think that's all I had. Didn't have much.
Okay. Uh. Any questions for Deputy Chief?
Not with budgets, not with anything, it's about rules of the road.
Okay.
Well, these folks that like to mow lawns and park in the traveled portion.
Okay.
I don't think that's, especially right across from the new public safety building, those folks mow the lawns across the road right on the. Crest of that hill. What's? I don't believe that's acceptable, but. So I don't know how.
These are the, the commercial services with the trailers.
Because either they can't drive and back into a driveway, or they can't back out, so they park in the traveled portion of the highway. And and some places are very, I mean, that's kind of a dangerous.
Into a, not literally run into.
That's a dangerous spot.
On a couple.
Um, this morning, there was a tree service company just up the road, right on the crest of the hill, two, three trucks in the road. Nobody flagging traffic, and it's right at the crest of the hill on McKinley Avenue, one of the busier roads, and and I just don't know what the rules are.
So anytime, I'm gonna pull this one, if you're obstructing the general flow of traffic, you are supposed to have flaggers or traffic control. Um, which is the way it's supposed to be for that reason, especially when you have a tree, three tree trucks and things like that, they are supposed to have a flagging crew. Because they are interrupting the general flow of traffic. We've, we'll say turned on that, but we've always, we've all encountered the the lawn mowing crews that do exactly like says. And I think it comes down to. Why are they doing it, or where are they doing it, is it a flat stretch, or is it on a curb, or if it's on a crest? If it's someplace where it shouldn't be happening, by all means, call us and we'll talk to the crews and tell them.
Cause you can figure out the day they're across the road from the building, we'll talk to them.
So I've seen them over there, I think, once so far.
Yeah, I mean, we're coming into the season, so it's in, in.
Yeah, by all means, call, if they're in a dangerous, or you think they're in a dangerous spot, call us, we'll go down, take a look, talk to them and see if we can remedy.
They've already rectified one, one situation on McKinley Avenue, couple houses up where, you know, um, it's, and it seems like it's. Yeah, if it was a straight stretch and you can see both ways, um, another place is a corner of, of. Uh, Pinnacle Ridge Road and Bro Street, just one house in, so when you're making that turn, there's a truck and a trailer right there, and you can't see the oncoming. And and I hate bothering you guys every time I see this stuff, but.
Yeah, but that's why we're here.
Yeah, I know, it's like, they gotta, I just think people should be smarter than that, but. And and it might just be a pet peeve of mine, cause I don't like.
I understand it completely, so, and they're looking at it from the standpoint of, we'll be, they're just doing it out of ease. They don't wanna take the extra five seconds to either, like you said, back in or pull in or whatever.
Right.
They just wanna be lazy about it.
And I don't think there's any flashing lights on either.
Well, they leave their hazard flashers on or whatever, the, today that truck up there, they had one trailer on hitch, and that was in the road with no lights and whatever, and. I should have stopped and talked to you guys, but I was late for an appointment and I just kept going and. Uh, and and it was right there in the crest of that hill on McKinley Avenue, so you pull out around them and some, you know, if you're driving the speed limit, it's gonna be okay. But you can ask JP how fast they come down McKinley, so.
Oh, yeah, no.
Oh, Campbell Road too.
Yeah, two Campbell, people meeting at fifty miles an hour, passing my bill.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, thanks very much. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Evening all, how are you?
Hello.
Um, first, a huge thank you to uh. Chief Clark, um, Chief Dumas, um, and to Sharon. For our senior luncheon uh last week, the food was phenomenal, it was chicken and. Salad and mashed potatoes, very buttery mashed potatoes and uh. We had a very uh strawberry shortcake, all homemade from my secret chef. And um, for Chris to pull the trucks out and get the bays ready to go, and Bill helping us set up. And then the tour afterwards, just to look at their expressions was actually really cool. They asked a lot of questions, they got to see where their money was spent, and for me, that was a win-win. I'm really glad that we did it that way, because Ed, literally Ed's walking down the hall and I go, you gotta go talk, give a speech to them. I was literally joking with Ed, twenty minutes later, I'm like, Ed, all right, we gotta have him look at the other part, he went in and and did a fantastic job. Explaining like the whole budget and the process and what they actually do and what they can do, and and literally, we basically had to kick them out. Um, because they just were just so impressed with. The facility.
What up?
And um, you know, I wanna thank everybody that helped make that day, I thought that was a huge win-win for our seniors in our town to see.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yes. She's a secret weapon, secret.
I was trying to, I was trying to get the stupid.
So our next senior function is the twenty second, which is Thursday, that's the Jazzman's from Rutland Town and from West Rutland are playing at the. Rutland Town, excuse me, at the West Rutland Town Hall is a party, uh, we dubbed it the the Border War. Whatever you wanna call it, East meets West, wherever you wanna do it. And so if you can attend, that would be really cool, you'll be entertained for about an hour with music, each group's gonna plan to play about a half hour. So if you can make it over there, that would be great, um, the seniors as well, uh, as far as everything else. Uh. And mowing in the rain, and mowing in whatever, been doing whatever I can to get everything up and running, and it's moving along nicely. The pool is ready to be cleaned out this next week, and we're hoping to turn it on, um, on the twenty fourth. Um, on the twenty fourth, which is on the twenty third is when we traditionally turn it on is Memorial Day weekend. And um.
That's, that's kind of okay.
Feels like good, Dewey looks really good with the transplant for the grass. So if you get a chance to go over, it looks like it's starting to look like it used to in the old days, which is. Which is awesome. Yes, and it, it's, it's doing great. Um, they are replacing the inside of the sand filters at the pool, both of them with baffle and sand. And I just got the call from the guy yesterday. They're going to do something, I believe on the sixteen. Is when they're going to start doing that and hope to have it done in a couple of days. They have to actually, A1 sucks up the sand. Yeah, find this, you know, they do the rock, paper, scissors of all this guy who goes inside and replaces everything. And then they fill it back up and then we'll be good to go. So. A lot going on. Baseball started today. Of course, it's not raining and I canceled because it was supposed to rain. So I'm going to get all those phone calls and emails, but. It is what it is. So everything is really rocking and rolling at this point. Um, and, and we'll be good. We did have a committee meeting, so either Sharon or Matt can go over that. We had it just before. Perfect. Love it. So if uh, if you don't have any other questions for me at this point, um. You know, we're, we're moving right along, which is great. So I don't know, Matt, if you want to give a synopsis of what we did earlier, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll give the synopsis of two items and I want to relive the whole committee meeting, but uh, basically. Mike's had an issue come up with the uh, maintenance position. That uh, the part-time maintenance position that we have during the summer, the person who's been doing is not able to do it this year. Uh, so we need to work around. Uh, there's a couple of different ways that could be done, but one of those could involve. Um. Hiring an existing town employee to work those hours. Uh, and that just raises some questions about how we handle overtime and what rules apply. So what I would like to do is run that question by. Town Council and or Teresa to get an answer. So we can, I think we, we can make it work regardless of what the answer is, but we need to. Know what the answer is. So we implement it properly. Um.
Do you want to call Kevin?
I can call Kevin.
Appreciate a different voice.
Sure. Uh, yeah, and, and the related issue with that too is, you know, if overtime rules apply, we, we would run into trouble with. Our comp time policy, uh, how it would uh, get implemented across departments and stuff. So you gotta be careful about that.
And actually that would apply in other places too potentially. So that would be good to know. Right.
So that, that was that issue. So I'll, I'll get with Kevin about that and then I'll report back. Um. And the other issue is just kind of an FYI that uh, we're going to be running into. A problem with lifeguards potentially at Northwood because. Uh, the lifeguards need to be certified every two years and the bulk of that has traditionally been done through the high schools year on studies. Program with a class run through the city rec and right now that's not happening. So. Um. We have some people returning who are licensed that don't need. Recertified or certified who don't need recertification this year. Um. But we have other. We need more people who are not certified. So Mike's. Um. Going to be making some calls, but we may be shorthanded and it could have a domino effect on the programming we're. Able to offer and it just kind of, it is what it is. Well, we'll see what we can do about it, but. That was a low cost way of. Getting our lifeguards certified and that's not currently available. So.
Yeah, Mike does have somebody for next year.
Hopefully.
How do you become a certifier?
Well, you just have to take a course. Um, I've already reached out before this happened, just happenstance. To a person to see if they were interested in. You know, a summertime job and part of that responsibility would be to get certain, I told them I would pay for them to become a lifeguard instructor. To certify lifeguards, to teach the course. And uh, they were interested in that, but I told them that would be happening. The following year because I would have to budget all of that for the following year and they, they're a former lifeguard, they're a town resident. Um. And it would work great if, if they choose to do that. Then we would be in a really good situation. Everything else that's happened has put us in a very. Different situation. Um, I guess I suppose I could go get certified to teach lifeguards. Um, I got enough going on rather than to teach how to be a lifeguard. Um. But I, there is a potential remedy to the situation, but it, it could get kind of dicey this year. I might have to cancel certain lessons or not offer them. Staffing could be an issue because we have some kids that don't come back, which is fine. But I always have a crew that I can hire. Well, now that crew has to travel over to Han, Hanover. To get certified, spend Googles of money. And that doesn't really happen until July. We open in June. Then the ones that have to get re-serted. They don't have a place to get re-serted. So they're technically not able to be a lifeguard. So I don't know exactly. I have to look, but I might have five that are actually certified. And I normally carry thirteen or fourteen.
What two other municipalities with pools do?
To be honest, a lot have run through.
Well, maybe it's maybe an intermunicipal agreement to hire somebody to do it this year would be.
And, and that's a possibility, but the issue is that most pools are opening within the month.
Yep.
And to find somebody that's like, they already, I, I got something. Literally on Thursday that they offered a lifeguarding class at VAC. Starting Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Okay.
I got it Thursday.
A little short.
And then the other one was a research class, which was either the week before or right after. So I, I sent it out to kids that. But it's also, you know, four hundred and something bucks.
Do we usually pay that?
We usually pay for research, but um, um, that, that is maybe, we usually end up paying. Maybe uh, an eighth. We've been very fortunate for a long time.
Yeah.
A long time. And now that's why I'm looking hopefully. To get this going, but it does not do any good for this year. So I'm just forewarning you that. There. Could be days where I don't open and it, it could be a hundred degrees. I just don't have people to run it. If things fall. You know, but I know one's taking it in July. That's wonderful. The others are trying to find a place to take it. But it doesn't look like anytime soon. So I'm, I'm just kind of forewarning you that there could potentially be a problem. And I don't have a great solution right yet. I'll try my one last trick and maybe that'll save me, but. Um, I, I'm not going to say that now as to what that is, but. Just want you to know, if you get phone calls like, why is the pool closed? It's a hundred degrees. And I'm like, well, I had two lifeguards that could work. That's why the pool's closed. Because I don't have kids, because that whole debacle. Has helped us tremendously over the years. And I used to have a lady that did certify her kids and she decided to retire last year, which is great. She was awesome. But there's. Really nobody else around here. And that's where people will go. Like I know, for example, last year they. Took the tapestry kids from the city, the adults, and they bust them over to UVAC for a week. To become certified lifeguards for their tapestry program. So. Let's just hopefully things will work out in our favor with this person that I have in mind and. You know, I keep my fingers crossed, but that's for next year. That's not really going to help us right now. So that's where we stand. So if you have any, that was basically the gist of our meeting, committee meeting, but. Yeah. Which, which. Shouldn't pull into conversation, but townwide celebration.
Yeah, actually that's.
I'm telling you that because the kids start to go back to college, go off to college. So this could be a. Parking lot event, looking at a pool that nobody's in. I'm just literally hoping it doesn't, but I'm. I'm just, that just clicked in right there. So. The pentacles have come our way.
If you have to. Could you like, if you have to close on certain days and to save lifeguard time for townwide celebration. Can you do that?
It's uh, the, the, it's not about, it's the bodies, like the last week of August. Like I have one, two, three, I have four seniors. Well, they're going to leave mid-August.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If I have a couple of underclassmen and if these five, six people that are applying, if they're certified. We should be okay because it's a Saturday and usually it's not a sports day and most of the kids are into sports. So that's when fall sports start. College kids. Depending on when they have to go back. They might go early or not. So it's kind of like a crap shoot, but if I don't have. The younger group to stay and the college kids have to go to college. So the seniors. That are graduating this year that are going to college, some start. You know, Labor Day weekend. Well, summer gone, the second week of August. But I've always had enough to make it work. I'm just. I'm just throwing that out that this is, this could be an issue for this year. I'll have a better idea once we get going. So I don't want to hit panic button. I just want you to be aware. And not come to you and say, by the way, yeah, this is happening. You know, you know that this might happen. You know it now. So. Try to do the best I can. Is all I can offer.
And then you compound, if the teachers go out on strike.
Oh, there's, there's so many like.
If they have to go to school later in the year, it's going to be.
Yep. Yep. There's, there's lots of moving parts to all that's going on lately around here on the people in the innie.
Um, the only thing. I, I was trying to anticipate things, but I think this is more a bill question for this year as I understand the who's in charge when. And a Sharon question. Townwide celebration, don't we usually try and get something out to the school kids? Did we do that last year to get flyers out so the school kids take them home and parents know about townwide celebration?
A lot of times what also happened was we sent it up to the eighth grade parents who did a fundraising for their trips. Now, that's why the eighth graders would help because you were making a donation. This year, the school, this is the last DC trip for the school.
Okay.
And next year's eighth grader are going on day trips. Um. So the cost is, there was multiple reasons why people were not able to go on the trip. The cost of the trip was. In the thirty thousand for it. You know, it's almost a thousand bucks a person to go. Extremely expensive. So they're doing day trips and they decided on, they're going to go like canoeing and then. Canoeing down a river and then doing the Killington thing. They're going to go.
So are they fundraising for?
They're fun, they'll fundraise for someone, but it's not going to be anywhere near the amount of money that they would have to fundraise. For the DC trip.
Okay.
They're all day trips. There's no overnight. They're doing like three day trips.
So who do we talk to about seeing if we have?
I would just reach out to the school and the school could give you that information, the principal or secretary over at the school. They'll be able to let you know. If they want to put flyers out, yes, that's great. They send a bi-weekly email home. And you can uh, send something over and, and they can run that.
Yeah, you had your eighth grade group.
You will.
I will know.
Didn't you helping us?
Yes, the eighth graders typically help us because they're raising, well, the incoming eighth grade. Yeah. So this year's seventh grade group, which is only a class of twenty-six, you know, they're the smallest class we've had in a long time. So, well, considering we're graduating in class of fifty-three.
Cause they were great.
Yes, and they, they have been. So you can, if, if you want to send a flyer over. To school, they can put in the weekly email and, and you can send it to me and I can give it to the parents that are, they're just starting to gear up. For their raising money for their trips, though that's not as substantial as.
Yeah.
The DC trip.
The flyer, I, I had, I have the flyer. We've done it every year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we typically call out the events that are happening there, but we haven't had a townwide celebration. Meeting to discuss any events, so I don't know. I can create it, but there's not, not, I don't know what to necessarily put on it. So.
Sounds like we have a meeting.
Yes.
So set up a meeting.
Well, Billy, you set a meeting and I'll be in attendance. Your last time to set it up.
Who, who's on the committee with you? Am I?
You have been, yes.
I, I usually show.
Or is this a new one?
I, I know it's me.
I know it's you.
And I think it's Matt. It was Kurt.
Townwide celebration is Sharon and Kurt.
And he's driving the little.
I know.
He's driving the centipede.
So I figured that. You would certainly help cook. I thought I could count it and that.
Good, yeah.
We did a good job last year.
We did fine.
And we'll take you off sausages because I know you.
I know. Well, yeah, we know what we need is, well, that we can get into all of that at townwide celebration committee meeting.
That's right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
That's all I had for Mike. Anybody else have anything? Um, okay. Let us know if you need something from us for the whatever fix you might have for the lifeguard situation.
Yeah, I'll have to look at money I, I can pull from somewhere. Um. If I have to pay for some of this. Um. Like I said, we've been very lucky and now we're not, and hopefully we'll get back in the lucky department. Later on.
Well, let's hope you're racing the whole.
We'll see.
Will be.
Cool beans. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
There he is.
Ah, let's see. We participate.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, can you hear me? Phone's broke.
There he is.
There he is.
And. All right, we cannot hear you if you're talking.
No. All right. Good evening, everybody.
There's the green box. That's us.
Bill was checking to see if.
Hang on, Chris. Right now. Good evening.
Thank you. So let me, yeah, let me start by thanking you and the firefighters for their response to the um. Fire down the south end on was, it was Saturday, right?
It was Thursday.
Thursday and, and Kurt. For his efforts um, with Clarendon Fire Department. So thank you very much.
Well, we're uh, we'll try to help when we can. Unfortunately, that was a. Little beyond savable when we got there, but everything went well. Uh, like I learned, close to thirty years ago, you always fight a fire better the following day than you do with your action. Um. The owner of that building did call me a few times about the water for the bank. So I. Did palm that off on Dave. So it sounds like he's got that under control.
Yeah.
Um. We went to the loyalty day parade on Sunday. We had a couple of trucks in there with a handful of members.
Good.
Uh, we're going to West Rutland on the twenty-sixth for their parade. For Memorial Day. So I'll have a truck or two over there with some people. Uh, open house, of course, is on the seventeenth, so we're ready for that. Uh, I did want to schedule a committee meeting if possible.
Yes, please.
Before the next board meeting. I got a few things to bring up.
Okay, good, because I was thinking we probably should. And do you have the bylaws for us to consider or is this other business?
I got. We're doing the bylaws um, monthly, so we're, we're not through them all yet. I got a couple that I could share with you, but I got some other things to bring up also.
Okay. Um, could you, could you send? Me and Kurt. Email or emails about available dates that work for you unless you know them right now.
Um. I can, any day should work for me. It just has to be after uh, three thirty.
Okay.
That works for me too.
Okay. All right, I'll, we'll see what we can set up.
Uh, just a. Kind of a heads up thing for the next budget. I went to a county meeting last week. And learned that in two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, you're no longer to, able to buy gear with PFOAs in it because it's cancer causing, so. The gear we have will still be usable up till the ten-year rule. But after that. But after that, it's uh, all the new stuff, which is almost a thousand dollars more set than a normal set now. But we got a couple of years, so we'll figure that out when the time comes.
Uh, we'll start budgeting, it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to do that. I did have one question for Joey. Um, I know they canceled paving because it was raining, but do you have any idea when uh, when and if I have to take the trucks out of there?
Yes, um, so I was gonna wait to my turn, but I can tell you now. Um, so the plan is Monday. Um, they have given up on this week entirely. Um, so probably the ideal would be to take them out Monday morning like you were gonna do this week, um, and then house them temporarily um, at the garage, highway garage. Um, depending on the weather, the, the concern is to let the pavement um, cool and set, so the trucks don't tear it up, so. Whether you want to be there a day or two or overnight, that'll, you know, if it, if they pave it on Monday and it were to rain, Monday night or Tuesday, it would be great, but it, the forecast doesn't show that, but right now they're planning on Monday. So probably first thing Monday morning would be most convenient for you, that way they would be there, you know, or whenever, but you can, we can work that out, how you want to do it.
Alright, might just try to do it Sunday, just so I can get people to, because we'll have to take our gear with us also.
Right.
So I don't have to do it with me and you and whoever else, but I'll try to put Sunday if you uh, think they're gonna pave on Monday.
Yeah, that's, uh, Gary called me this morning and he said that's, that's what they're planning on, because next week does look a little bit. They're, they're shooting for Monday.
Alright, perfect, and it'll be there can be a bunch of cars parked on it by Saturday, correct? Won't hurt it.
I, I think the cars will be alright. The, the, the biggest concern is with the fire trucks being heavy and, you know, either turning too short or static steering, you know, sitting in one place and turning the front wheels to back in, things like that, um, till it cures good, but I think the cars should be alright there. Um, obviously you're gonna want the truck there Saturday, so.
Right.
We should have them back. I think we should be okay by Saturday.
I imagine, you could probably bring them back Wednesday, honestly.
Yeah.
Once the asphalt's cold, it's uh.
It should be good, so, you know, if Dave's okay with you inhabiting his premises for a couple of days, you should be alright. Like, Wed- Wednesday night, you know, maybe that's what you do for your Wednesday night stuff, just go get them and bring them back.
Yep. Alright, I will talk to Dave.
Alright.
Okay, well, we have you and Deputy Chief Washburn is here and Joey is here and Bill is here. Um, let's go down to action item. Oh, sorry.
I ju- I just wanted to mention for the, the fire truck thing, I'm a jig. Uh, if you're gonna move them on Sunday, I, uh, I can't guarantee you everything will be cleaned up from the tree sale. She's gonna try to get everything cleaned up Saturday, if she can. But if not, she, there might be stuff in that middle bay, so. I, I I don't know, I, we're, I mean, we're committed to this tree thing and this come Sunday thing came out of left field, so.
Well, we can do Monday. I'll figure something out, if it's easier.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you wanted, I don't know how you're gonna store your gear there, it's gonna have to be in a pile or something, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, you can bring that up Sunday, but that doesn't help you if you got a call on Sunday, I guess.
Yeah, I'll figure something out, I'll just.
I mean, it, it, it very well may be the last couple of years, they've, they've been out of there Saturday, so it's not been an issue, but um, this girl's new and this is all kind of new to her and, you know, I don't know.
She's gonna have help there, so.
Okay.
You can, she's gonna have more help than usual, so you can mention to her it needs to be cleared out by Saturday, by the end of the, the, yeah, program Saturday.
Okay.
Okay.
I will, I will evict her in due court.
You got the most popular place in town, Dave.
Apparently, wow. Need to start charging tickets or something.
Alright. All I had, Mary, unless someone has a question.
Well, I wanted to move a little bit to the public safety building open house while we have all of you folks, so, um. The circle did run a picture of the building and a notice that the um, open house would be May seventeenth from eleven to one. Um, I've talked with the secret chef about possibly baking a bunch of cookies and having someone assist with that. Um, and then we need probably just, we can pick up the, you know, juice cider, whatever. Um, make it real simple, we're not gonna feed people, we don't want you to, you know, barbecue steaks or anything. Not that you were probably planning on it. So we'll just do like, simple refreshments, nothing heavy duty. Um, they're prob, we should at least introduce the folks and thank them, um, who have been helping us, you know, VMS, Vic Shappi, um, Ed Clark, um, JP and Joey as clerks of the work in their, their two iterations. Um, and so question and, and figure out who wants to do the intro- introductions and small, very brief remarks. Anybody here like to do that?
I think Mary Ashcroft would do a fine job. So I nominate Mary Ashcroft. All in favor.
Alright, well, I'll keep it short, I, I promise you that. Um, so if you know somebody and specifically I should thank or not forget to mention, please do let me know that. Do we have some kind of a sound system? Or are you gonna put me on one of the sound systems on one of the fire trucks?
Yeah, give her the, give her the PA mic in the fire truck, good enough.
No. Don't.
Okay.
We'll see what you do.
Okay, alright. Cause somebody in the back is gonna say, speak up, can't hear.
Portable mobile radios and hook a speaker to it.
Yeah.
The one's in forty-one, Billy. Could you, you can work it through one of those?
Yeah, broadcast it over the radio, then play it over the station speaker.
Does this make me a DJ? For fifteen minutes?
There's options.
What, what's the projected time?
It is from eleven to one. Alright, and I'm guessing remarks sort of things will be somewhere between noon and twelve-thirty. Okay. Alright, so, um, and I'm gonna charge Bill with kind of coordinating this to, either of the departments need anything. Will each of the departments have someone on hand to kind of give guided tours or tell people you know, hands off the fire trucks, or you know, you don't get to be fingerprinted today or things like that, you're all set.
They may not want to be, huh? You never know.
Okay, okay, Chris, do you need anything?
I don't believe so, I believe we're all set.
Okay, yeah. Um, alright, well, thank you both for indulging the us, so that we can have an open house, but I think it's important, judging by how the seniors reacted, it sounds like um, I think we're gonna, we have interest and we want people to develop good pride in this new building, because they're gonna be paying the bond on it for the next ten years, so, um, we want to show them.
That the, with the seniors, with that they were surprised at what was all in there, and I think um, a lot, I never heard one of them say, you know, why'd we spend so much money on this building? It was quite the opposite and
Yeah.
You know, they were pretty proud of, of what their money was spent on, so I think that was a good feeling.
Yeah. And I keep coming back to what the interest rate is on our bond, which is what, three point one?
Pretty good.
Yeah, it's real good. These days compared with what's out there. Okay, so, um, thank you all, let me know if you need anything else on open house, Joe.
Uh, the, with the, I don't know when VMS is gonna get the, the parking places striped out. That may or may not be done by next Saturday, so there'll be some, um, things there. Um, and this doesn't have, but, uh, uh, wait till after you're done with the open hell stuff, because I have one more thing.
Well, I was gonna ask if police, um, officers direct traffic anymore, is that still?
It could be quite, yeah.
Lots of, yeah, I wonder, should we have some of the firefighters and the police officers maybe park their personal vehicles, like I don't know, down at State Place or something, so we have extra parking.
Could do that.
I just think if we got
It's a really good idea.
Ten guys show up for the fire department and you got, you know. Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
You can keep them, might have, might have tucked some people some places, we have enough parking.
Yeah, that's true.
But I, I didn't mention that, yeah.
Fire truck down, load everybody in.
Yeah.
They didn't get a ride on a fire truck.
Yeah, two shuttles.
Works a lot of diesel fuel.
Am I missing anything? If we got things covered, we've got refreshments. We've got the time, we're gonna rig up some kind of a speaker system for a thank you. We're gonna limit who has access to the microphone, you know, the usual things.
Well, you'd be good this time. Never mind, you don't want to hear this.
Alright. So, are we done with Chris, or are you talking with?
Well, I can either tell you now or tell you later, because this will just be whatever. Um, VMS, Gary came in today, Chris, put some grates in the ceiling of the server room. Um, one of the issues with that uh, cooling in there is that, I guess the room doesn't get warm enough, the compressor short cycles and it either ruined or damaged the compressor, so with the grates in the ceiling, you may be able to just shut that off and monitor the temperature in there. I don't think there's enough electrical equipment in there to um, require the amount of cooling that's there, so you can check on that and do what you um, one thing he did tell me though, is each individual room in that building, the partition walls go from floor to the deck, so there's no open space, so if you look above the server room, it's the exact same size as the server room above there, but it'll help to dissipate the heat. The heat, so you may want to just shut that um, cooling unit off on, till such a point, yours works better, right? Because you got more units in there and stuff running. Yeah, okay, so, um, Gary wanted me to let you know that, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Um, one more thing for townwide celebration, Bill, can we have a banner made? Um, that says something like, thank you Rutland town. Voters and taxpayers. Okay. Thank you.
And, you know. For the celeb, for, you said relative, you said celebration, I think, did you mean?
Open house.
Open house.
Yeah.
Yes, I did mean the open house.
Bill, Bill knew what you knew.
Okay.
It's a magic marker.
Got eleven days, Bill, no crowds.
Right. Um, so anything more for Chris Clark? And, um, thank you for driving to all of these parade route things. Um, I always consider that pre-recruitment for firefighters, especially the young you know, young kids who might want to be firefighters one day. Um, so onward, thanks, Chris, have a good rest of your evening.
You too.
Thank you, and I'll, um, be in touch with a couple of good dates for fire committee meeting.
Okay.
Alright, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hey there.
Hi.
Okay. Uh, just very brief, quick things. Um, taxes are due on Saturday. Um, this is the last one of the fiscal year, so I have to make my annual spiel about, um, for anyone listening that isn't escrowed and they pay coming in or by the, by mail. We will accept payments on Monday, because it falls on a Saturday. Um, but it will get a penalty and interest on Tuesday if we don't receive it by the end of business on Monday, which is four-thirty. Um, let's see, the, in your orders that you've signed tonight, we're sending off the second state payment for our school taxes. Um, the final cash flow came through and, um, this fiscal year, we're sending off three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to the state. I do believe for education purposes. Uh, let's see, Deborah and I went to a training in West Rutland held by the, um, VMCTA, Vermont Clerks and Treasurers.
Good.
Association. It was great, um, I haven't had a chance to get out and get some training for obvious reasons, and, um, we both got to hear some really great information. Some information was something that we already heard, but it was, um, really great to hear and verify some of the stuff we've overheard, so to hear it right from the source is great. Uh, given that, I wrote a circle article outlining some of the things for people to, um, learn. If you read my article in the next one that's coming out. And, um, given some of the new information that I gleaned, um, I would love, and I think we're in the process of putting together and meeting as a Personnel Finance Committee. So that, that is in the works. I don't know if we've settled on a date yet.
Nine o'clock on the fifteenth, which is when Andrew's coming in anyway, to meet with you at ten.
Okay, so he'll be here at nine, to be part of our meeting or no?
We wanted some overlap, so I'm assuming he'll be in at nine?
Uh, we're, I was gonna invite Teresa for nine.
Okay.
And then Andrew for nine-thirty.
Okay.
Great.
That's enough time.
And then ten o'clock with you, so Teresa will answer some of your personnel questions, I think, and also we can find out when the new time sheet will be available for use.
I would, um, yes, I, I, that was one of the things that I wanted to talk about at committee meeting, some of my ideas.
Yes, please.
Um, I don't think it's appropriate to talk about any of that right now until we talk about it in committee meeting, but um, there is some changes going on and I have to think ahead. Um, and that kind of goes into all of this, and what can we do in our office to make things more effective and efficient? Given some changes that are coming.
Okay.
It just reminded me that Teresa had emailed us an invoice.
Yes.
I don't think you were included, so that wasn't probably in the orders, I don't believe.
Heard or seen of her.
Okay, so I guess we need to.
Do anything, or we just send it to Carrie?
I think we send it to Carrie and you'll include it in the next.
Next ones, sure.
Okay, thank you.
My apologies to Teresa.
Yeah.
I'll word that right now.
Um, and then, uh, I just thought I would touch upon, I also did go to a training in Burlington, um, on, uh, an updated system for our elections and how we manage our voters in, in our office. Um, nothing really to report to you guys about that, it's just more updates for us, which is, it looks, it looks better. Um, but in addition to that, I know people are wondering if I know anything more about the executive order from Trump, and I have not heard a single word from the state about it at all. They were keeping us abreast, abreast of it, and I haven't received any emails about it. Um, I do continue to get those phone calls though about people frantically looking for their birth certificates because they need an enhanced driver's license. Um, not unheard of, so I, I just take those and field those phone calls. Um, and then, uh, we have to get together as a BCA, uh, sooner than later. This is an odd year and we need to challenge voters that are sitting on our voter list. Um, and that's what we do every year, every other year. Um, and then we have to do that by September, so if we get that process going sooner than later, that would be great. So that is my quick list, and if you have any questions, let me know. I should be getting, uh, well, as we go along, we'll get the calculations closer and closer to the end of the fiscal year. I got a couple of things.
well, as we go along, we'll get the calculations closer and closer to the end of the fiscal year. I got a couple of things ready for Dave tonight and um, I looked over a few other budgets, but I mean, department heads are, are managing their own budgets and they, they know yeah, what's going on, but I do have some ideas going into next fiscal year again. That's what I'll talk about at the committee meeting.
And I think if you saw what Andrew sent around to us, there are a couple of policies or one policy anyway that he marked up and he had a couple of questions and you did see that, right?
I did. I didn't get a chance to read it though. I do apologize.
No, don't worry about that because that's for our meeting and we get to discuss it then. So that should be, and if you have agenda items, um, just let us know what they are and we'll add those to the agenda because we obviously want to what, address what you have in mind. Um, we're gonna have Andrew, we're gonna have the Finance and Personnel Committee, we're gonna have Teresa, so okay, let's do what we can to get all of the, or all of our questions answered.
There's a lot of them.
May require more than one meeting. Some of us do have day jobs.
Oh, the day job.
Will I, um, would it be best to just forward some bullet points to Bill for the agenda?
Great. Yes, please. Yep.
Yeah, that, that would be good. Right now, that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for our Town Clerk and Treasurer? Taxes coming in, okay?
Yes, um, I checked on that before this meeting and it looks like, I know this sounds crazy, but we have about one point three million more to collect before Saturday, technically Monday, so we'll, we'll see.
Okay, you cash my check, so I know you got it.
Excellent. Yes, we did receive it. Did remember that.
Okay, anything else? If not, have anything for us? Anything? Okay.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Thanks for the uh, rat committee meeting too. That was important.
Okay, Mike Delahanty, yes, Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. How are you guys?
We're doing well. Mike is our first constable.
Yes, yes. Um, obviously sorry my schedule hasn't allowed me to join you guys in a while, but um, of course I'm happy to join you guys tonight. Um, not a ton to report out, um, just a couple animal calls of late. Um, most recently we had some concerns uh, over some roosters that I, I dealt with, but um, now that my schedule, yeah, now that my schedule has definitely freed up, I'm going to connect with uh, with the guys at the PD this week and talk about uh, you know, where they could use me, uh, some extra assistance for shift coverage on a more consistent basis. So um, obviously moving forward with our, with our meeting nights, um, I'll have plenty for you guys, but I'm gonna connect with the, with the guys at the PD tomorrow and uh, see where they could use me most.
Okay, um, we did have the ongoing question of where are we with the dilapidated buildings ordinance?
Yeah, let me uh, uh, I don't have.
Inherited from JP, I think.
Yeah, so I don't have an update for you tonight, but I will absolutely have a full update for you guys at our next meeting.
Great, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Alright, anything else that we wanted to direct to our first constable? Nope, guess not. So good to hear from you. Thank you very much and we'll look forward to um, maybe seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Absolutely. I'll be there in person. I appreciate it. See you soon.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Joe Donardo, Public Safety Building Clerk.
So we've talked about most of what's gone on. Um, last Tuesday and Wednesday, Middlebury Fence came down, um, constructed the impound yard for the PD, um, I believe it's what you're looking for. Yep, um, so it's, that's out back and, and that's done, um. I think pretty much uh, the schedule is laid out, the paving next week. They were hoping to get it done this week. Give the pavement time to cool dry so they can do the line striping. There's some concern about the oils from the pavement and it bleeds through the pavement paint, so they're, they want to be careful with that. So that's why I'm not sure if that'll be ready for next Tuesday or not, or next Saturday, so that's seventeenth, but um, otherwise I think uh, most of the punch list is gone through. They have secured the door that um, there was some concerns with. I believe that's to your liking. Um, and they're waiting on some stuff. There's trying to, there's a couple of little odds and ends inside it. I talked with Gary about most of the stuff they've gone through. I think the, um, there was some um, communication lines that had to be redone, few other little odds and ends, but um, that one, yeah. Um, they did fix the, uh, in the emergency manager room. For some reason, some of the sheet rock popped in there with the screws, no idea, but they're working on that stuff. I don't think there's too much else, the um, evidence room door handle.
Oh, right.
Thing, um, poor planning, um, well, that's.
Does it have a little plastic insert?
Well, I don't know. It's, it's, it's kind of a hard thing to fabricate something because there's nothing to hitch to in there, so they're trying to come up with something, but that will get taken care of. Um, the only other outstanding thing and, and I talked to Ted about that was a card reader for the foyer into the PD or the emergency man, and I don't know where we, if you've gotten any further with Royals on that.
Okay. They sent it to me that original plans for the building called for that card reader in the lobby. It also called for an intercom system, but somewhere in between, there was a discussion on different locks for the building. And then after that discussion went by the wayside, the next quote that we actually signed for the locks was for five of those card readers, had five, but the missing lobby one.
Yeah, that would be the fifth one, right?
No, that's the sixth.
That's the sixth one?
Five in that were on the quote that they sent us, but for some reason.
Alright, so the outside door, main entrance and the back door entrance, that's two. Where are the other?
Evidence server, uh, front main door, back door, and then the garage bay door.
Okay, so those, right, so, so that one, I guess is gonna be on us at some point, because the wiring is there.
And wiring for everything.
Alright, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll have to figure out that. Um, it's a little inconvenient because they can use their, their card reader to get into the building, but then you gotta pull your keys out to unlock that door, so we'll have to get that one installed that, um.
Is there a sign on the backside that says, please use front door? Okay, that would be like, good.
That was part of the, I know Dave was working on the sign and we got to go for it the other day.
Okay.
So it's closer. Yes, that would be out, but that'll show people where to park. And that will be a side eventually on that back, but it says, it's front or employees only.
Yep.
Okay.
Not an exit, not an entrance, exit only.
Yeah. Please use front door.
Yeah.
The sign is in, uh, we have it in our shop. I'm just waiting for DigSafe to clear it and that'll be planted. Perfect.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Yep. Is that what the white squiggly lines are out there in the grass, Dave?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Shouldn't lines be straight?
Nah, he made a spot where he needs to put the sign, so that's, that designates the um, where he's gonna put it so they can make sure there's nothing buried there. Um, yeah, so that's pretty much um, where we are. Everything is, I think, pretty much done, um. The, the, all the site work is done. Dave, uh, Gary's gonna have um, Fabian come back. Some of the matting they put down is um, blown around, so they're gonna do it, but it's so wet that you can't walk on the topsoil and you can't get out there and, and the grass is actually coming up through that mesh already, so that it's, it's, it's coming right along, so it looks, looks pretty good. That's pretty much it.
Alright, any questions for Joe? Alright, thank you, Joe. Uh, is John Paul on?
Oh JP, we have no Barbara and we have no Larry.
Okay, Marcia Chaffey, Head Lester. Good evening. Um, try it again. You're sort of going on and off mute.
No, I'm here.
You are, okay.
Had trouble with my uh, with my mouse here, um. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that we are winding down with all of our site visits. We have uh, maybe three or four more that we have to go to that are, you know, minimal site visits. And um, uh, the other thing is, I wanted to let you know that um, Kathy has offered to come in after hours, um, because of the newness of the business personnel property. She has uh, taken the bull by the horn and has done a fabulous job. But with two hundred and sixty-two uh, accounts, um, it takes a lot of time. So she has offered to come in in the evenings and put in, you know, a couple of hours here or there. And I just wanted to let you know that if you see lights on or if somebody sees lights on in the Lister's office, that it's gonna be Kathy in here doing her uh, doing her job.
Okay, good. Thanks for letting us know, yeah?
Yep. Otherwise, everything is uh, pretty much on schedule. Uh, like I said, we've only got a few more site visits to do. Um, we've got, had some really super full new build, buildings that we've had to do that have taken up quite a bit of our time, so. Um, but we're uh, working towards the end.
Okay. Good. Any questions for Marcia?
Yeah, Marcia, um, outdoor garden sheds that people use for putting their lawn care stuff in. Um, do we tax those? Are those uh, assessed and appraised or, or not? Um, I'll just.
Yeah, we do tax, we do tax sheds out. Um, you know, we come out and measure them and uh, depending on whether they've got, you know, uh, concrete pad or whether they're on a skid or, you know, whatever, we do have to measure and um, we have to apply it to the um, you know, to the um, um, to the, to the property.
Is that something new or is the town always done that?
Oh, no. It's nothing new.
The, the permit tracking ordinance says ten by ten or bigger. It's permit.
To put a shed in, okay. There's no cost for the permit, but it's just a track.
No, there's no cost for the permit, but we just need.
And that was, that permit, were we adopted that when?
Well, that's been.
Been there a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. So is it, it's basically a hundred square feet or less?
Yeah, a hundred square feet. We don't even, we don't even, you know, go out and visit, but anything less than that, yes, we do. Because we've got, you know, got some, you know, pretty neat sheds out there that have power, that have, you know, water, um. There aren't that many, but there are a few, so we do have to uh, we do have to assess those.
So it's based on square feet?
Correct, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright.
Okay. I'm, I think we're all set. Thank you, Marcia, very much.
Alright, thank you, Mary. Thank you, Barrett. Good night.
Good night. Okay, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, um, things on my list, but uh, I, we have a reimbursement request in your packets uh, to go to the state. Uh, that is for our Route Seven North sidewalk grant. Um, that is uh, number one in your packet. Uh, we've paid the invoices and now we are requesting reimbursement from the state. Mary has the letter to sign in the original folder to approve and authorize the chair to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in a second, so we've already spent it. This is a reimbursement.
Yes, we, 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 we've paid it and now we're requesting it back, yes.
Yeah, oh, this is expenses done mostly by the regional commission as the consultant.
Yeah, it's Regional Plan and Commission and Stan.
I always ask this question. So we, you, yeah, we earmarked our twenty percent match somewhere, right?
This, this comes out of engineering in, in Dave's budget.
Dave's budget.
Yes.
That's where the engine.
So it comes out and it goes back into it.
Right, so we send out nine and get back seventy-two.
Yes.
Okay. And that's where we are. I just, I couldn't remember where we were taking the twenty percent match from.
Okay, motion's been made in a second to authorize some middle and meet a sign. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries five to nothing. Okay.
Uh, the next thing in your packet is a letter we got from Velco. Um, basically asking for collaboration to help ensure that uh, work near their right of way is uh, approved properly through them, so. Uh, we, since we have on, they talked about using online tax maps, which we do have, so that's a help, uh, but this is just something that they're asking uh, for help to collaborate with.
Yeah, um, so Marcia, while we have you, if you can hear me and you're still on, um, on our tax maps, do we show uh, utility rights of way? I can't remember. Okay, well.
There, I think the Velco right of ways are marked on the maps.
I think they may be.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they're marked.
Because Velco, or um, yeah, Velco's also asking a digital level for greater right of way awareness and this new digital era towns are implementing digitalized parcel map viewers for ease of convenience.
Uh, for example, along uh, north and south that goes across Killington Avenue that long right away is on our map.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, there, there's, there, they are.
There's one across Grove Street just below the farm.
Yeah, there's, there, there, it looks like they're all there, yeah.
Okay, alright, so we're kind of already doing some of the awareness that.
Yep.
Okay.
And we don't, we don't have a digital parcel map viewer, do we?
Yeah.
Listers map.
Yeah, but that's uh, it's not fully digital, right? You can't pull up the parcel IDs online off it.
Oh, yeah, the whole thing.
I haven't looked at that a couple minutes, huh? I always, I use the state GIS map.
Commercial properties, no. Well, GIS map is good, but this, but this, this gives you links to the Lister cards and everything for for residential properties. Doesn't do commercial properties, but yeah.
No, the point of though, this letter, and I understand this, but most of their right of ways pass through private properties and stuff, so the people that have the right of ways are the ones that need to be more aware. I mean, not on a town level, so like, if, if there were town land crossed by a transmission line or a right of way, but um, if you have a Velco line going across your land, you know what you can and can't do underneath.
Yeah, I mean, you've got the easement and I think that's their whole point. Please remind people not to put buildings in our right of way.
Does that show up on all the private parcels or just a?
And, and they, in the last few years, they've done it. Ton of work. Um, replacing poles across, you know, and, and building a really nice road system along their right of ways.
Like, the back of the properties along West Ridge Terrace and the back of the properties along Hitzel Terrace all have Velco right of way that run across the back portion of the property and, and
Yeah.
Quite a bit of it.
We have a link to their thing on our website.
We, we do not yet, no.
Can, can we, like, put that letter or something of that nature on our website for people? They could, you know, just to be aware, if you have a Velco line in your backyard, these are things you just need to know or something.
It's.
That, that might help them.
We, we have quite a bit of, there's quite, quite a few parcels that are, that are affected by that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Uh, we received uh, number three uh, email to nominate a local leader from the town of Rutland to attend Community Leadership Summit.
August eleventh at well, we used to call it VTC over in Randolph. It's now Vermont State University in Randolph.
And still VTC.
I know.
Somebody wanna go?
Do, anybody wanna go? Let's start it that way.
It's the eleventh, it's a Monday.
You wanna go? You're an alumna.
Yeah, doesn't mean I have time to go in August. If it's January, maybe I'd consider it, but.
No, because you leave the Holland Center, Plowton.
Well, it's.
Explore ways to support local leadership and democracy.
There's no good time.
Anybody wanna go?
Uh, they kind of. When do they need to know, boy? When do they need to know, boy?
Uh.
Yesterday. No.
All right.
There's no deadline.
By June fourteenth.
Oh, June fourteenth. Okay. We got time. You got time, too. Please forward this email to someone else in the town of Rutland if you are not the right person for this request. It's a Monday?
I believe August eleventh. Yeah, it's Monday.
So Kirk, can you tell us more about what it was?
Well, that's the thing. You went to this. Oh, I didn't go to it. No, I went to VTC for college. That was it. Oh, I'm alumni.
I went there for a lead paint training, one day session. Yeah, yeah. And I passed, too, so there.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we do have a little time, so if you would stick it in our packet for next and I'll see if anybody has changed their minds and suddenly really, really.
No, I'm good. I got, I got, I got covered there. Yeah.
Okay.
Recycle it, yes. Uh, all right, uh, the next uh is the feedback we got from Andrew. Uh his, his, his notes and then his edits are in, in the policy, but this is just to give you guys a chance to look at his notes, uh and then it'll, this will be discussed at the finance committee meeting next week.
Right. Um, so we wanted you to see it, hang on to it, because we're going to be talking with Andrew and Carrie. Um, and may have further revisions on it. So, or or, you know, we'll take your feedback now if you want us to keep some things in mind. But that's the plan. It's going to committee right now.
What a plan. That's all. It's good.
All right.
On file.
Good plan.
Okay.
Uh, and the next thing you have is uh a court monis- re-received from uh Peter Franzoni about um request to adopt a resolution. And I did make copies of that, put it on your desk. It was not a blank one. It's the one that the Rutland City adopted.
Right. Yeah, so did he not attach the blank resolution?
He did not.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, no.
And I do know there was, I mean, it's good discussion generated over in the city, and I know at least one or two townspeople who went over to participate, so. Um, what's your pleasure, folks, with this?
I think until a town resident wants us to entertain this, then maybe we'll entertain it at that point, but.
Um, it's basically in support of due process of law. And frankly, that's where I was Saturday, up with the lawyers marching in favor of due process of law, so. And we had to retake our oath at the end of it, and we swore to uphold Vermont government and the constitution and US government and constitution, so.
I generally support the spirit of this. There's some things on here that would need to be, well, obviously, it would have to be edited to be town-specific, but there's a couple other things on here that I would probably also change if we were gonna do it, so, I mean, I don't.
Do you want to offer us a rewrite?
Well, the thing is, I, I don't think we want to create a lot.
You're going to do the rewrite.
Yeah, big project out of a national issue at the local level, but.
Well, that's the thing. It's like, it's not going to accomplish anything, so.
Well, you never know.
You want to talk about it at our personnel meeting?
Personnel meeting, sure. We'll do that. We'll assign it to personnel. Okay.
Okay. Uh, we've got your budget status sheets. Uh Otter Creek Communication District.
Oh, yes.
She is, she is passionate about having a resolution to this one way or the other.
Okay, so we had an applicant.
We have, we have, we have, we have an applicant who is willing to continue to serve, but we'd like to find somebody di- they'd like us to find somebody different. We do have the option, I did put this on your desk, to withdraw from the Otter Creek District. We don't lose anything. We still are considered, we are still a member of the district and can re-enroll at any point. She is asking the board to either appoint someone tonight or withdraw.
Right.
Because they have an annual meeting and she needs it.
She also needs a quorum.
Right.
Are we still a member if we withdraw?
Because we're still, we're still, we're still, we don't have any voting rights, but we're still part of it. And we can ask, say, like, it takes a board action to withdraw, it takes a board action to go back.
Yeah, I think we're, we're pretty much set.
We, we are in a fortunate position. As, as a town, like, the goal of this was to support broadband rollout in, you know, rural areas and largely we are, we are very fortunate and very well served by broadband. So I'm not sure there's a lot that we could support this.
We did have Ms. Muma.
Yes.
Willing to stay on unless we could find somebody else. And she mostly did it because she wanted to make sure they had a quorum for um the business that they needed to, but she even said the same thing, which is pretty much it's built out and we're, we're in good shape.
Yeah, yes.
So do you want to keep Ms. Muma on for another year?
So that, that's what you're saying. She, her position has now changed. She wants somebody.
She would, she would, her preference is to be replaced.
Yes.
Um, I mean, if she doesn't show up to a meeting, then it's not going to be quorum anyway.
Well, if we're not in it, then they have one less quorum.
That's why, yeah, that's why we have to make the decision.
Yeah.
Withdraw, I mean, we're.
So I'll move, we withdraw from the Otter Creek Communication District.
And how about and thank them for their work?
Sure.
Okay. Second, the motion's made in the second to withdraw and to thank them for their work. Any further discussion?
There is a form I have on your desk that needs to be signed by the select board chair.
Authorize chair sign.
Okay, is it in the folder?
No, it was on, it was on your desk. The Otter Creek at the top.
Hope I haven't marked it up.
We all have. It's. On my desk.
They all look alike. Okay. All right, so.
Enough.
And it's basically the select board of the town hereby approves withdrawing from the Otter Creek Communication Union District. Um, any discussion about this? If not, all in favor of withdrawing, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five, nothing. Six.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm adding, thank you for your work. Okay.
Perfect. Uh, also on your desks is a email from Stephanie at the Regional Planning Commission uh about a co- a service contract amendment. Um, in her email, she explains why she believes this is a good idea. Uh, and I also agree this is a good idea. Um, it would allow us to basically immediately apply for reimbursement and not wait for the plan to be adopted. If there's, if there's more work needed, we would get an additional invoice, we would anyway. But this would allow us to apply for what we've, what we've done so far uh in an effort to basically guarantee we get reimbursed.
What's LHMP?
Local Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, all right.
That was the one that Dave and Marty and I in the presentation and where we've now it's adopted pending approval, approv- approved pending adoption, approved pending adoption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Follow her recommendation?
Yes, I think that's.
Second.
Motion's been made in the second to follow her recommendation, and there's the separate document.
There is a document to sign and requires a, a signature.
A signature.
By representative.
The chair to sign on behalf of it.
Second.
Okay, motion is made in the second to authorize chair to sign on behalf that the agreement effective August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four shall be modified as follows. Period of performance extended to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, or the completion of tasks. And then their obligations, they'll bill us twice. And obviously, we got to pay. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Uh, last Friday, the scholarship applications were due and they are in a big pile right there. Uh, there's one big envelope that has a bunch of individual ones in there and the scoring sheets and all that are all in there, too.
Yep.
Um, and then there's some other envelope people brought in that are also on top. So you've, you've got, you've got everything, everything there.
Did they have a deadline? We're going to try to do this before the next board meeting, but does the school have or any?
Um, we had talked to them about that. We, we, we pushed out, actually, I think we pushed out our deadline. We pushed it out because they didn't need it as soon as we thought they did, so I don't, I don't know what it was, but I've got.
Oh, yeah. City goes on strike. You won't graduate anybody.
Um, I, I don't have the date from, and let's see here, and I don't, I don't have a, I don't have one.
Take that as a no.
Anyway, that, we, we talked to her about it, but I, yeah, there is one, but I think if, if you do it by next board meeting, we should be okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Um, yeah, so they're all, they're all in there.
Yeah, so how many were there?
Oh, I think we had ten or, ten or twelve.
Okay.
But we, we had, we had several right at the.
Really?
Pulling in the parking lot on Friday afternoon, so, or Friday, Friday morning, so they, they were, all, all of them were on time. There was nobody that came in, so that was good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, sometimes it takes a little encouragement from the parents, but they all got it in time. Uh, let's see what else we have here. Um, we have two sewer users who exceeded their allocation last year, who have yet to file their application for an increase. Uh, they received initial letter telling them they needed to, and they have received a follow-up letter telling they needed to. And one of them called and asked about it, said, yep, we'll get it to you, and it's been a while. Um, so the, the statute, I'm sorry, the ordinance allows us to have a violation not more than five hundred dollars, and each week is a new violation. We haven't had to go to this before.
Mm-hmm.
They've ju- people have just.
Mm-hmm.
So how would you like to handle this?
So I suggest we notice them that if they do not reply and with whatever they need to do next, buy and give them a date thirty days hence, then we will impose a five hundred dollar fine on them.
Any reason we can't just adjust the thing and pull them accordingly?
They have to apply for it. So this, so the ordinance says they have to purchase the allocation, the gallons per day. So it's five dollars, in, in the allocation, it goes in five doll- at five dollars. So there's one that's, I think, over like a hundred and eighty-six gallons, so that's, you know, almost a thousand dollars for, for a fee, so the, the we, we've never run into a point where we've had people have just not done it, so um we, the ordinance doesn't allow us to bill them for the overage. It says they have to apply for the increase. Uh, e- exceeding your allocation is not, is not permitted. They have to, they have to ask for the increase. But there's no provision to say, here, give us, we're billing you for what you did overage. That sewer ordinance is, is older, but that opens a whole different conversation, so uh there's really not a way to change that at the moment.
And that's a one-time fee.
It is.
So you just pay for your usage and then.
You own it.
There's no real, so when they went over, there's no, basically, really no penalty for the fact that they went over in the past.
If they, if they're over at the end of the year, so we do, we do it once, I do, I do, I check this once a year. And we only under, we only, I, I end up with a handful that, that go over. Um, and then we, we send them a letter saying, hey, the ordinance has a, has a, we outlines how we do it. And they come to us with an application that, and they pay the five dollars per gallon and we, I mark it down on the spreadsheet that they're increased and.
So they're, are they paying retroactively also or just?
No, so this is not, this is nothing, we don't, we don't charge them because the city pay, they pay a bill, the quarterly bills gets paid to the city. But they're using our lines to do it, so they pay per gallon to use our lines. So this is, this is, this is a user fee.
This is, this is the buy-in.
Right.
It's the buy-in. So like, if you put up a new building and you're going to use a thousand gallons a day, you pay the town five grand.
Right.
And that's your buy-in. And then the amount you pay is through your water usage. You know, so like the new public safety building.
Right.
Pay so much per month.
Right.
For using the system.
Yeah, so for example, Walmart, BAI Rutland, which owns the mall property right now, has an allocation for sewer usage. If they determine they need more than what they already have right now, they're going to need to apply for whatever they think they're going to use as part of their pro- as part of their building process.
So if we send them another little notice and say, you know, you've kind of missed this, this is the thing, and maybe a little copy of that ordinance that outlines that, and that gives them one more chance.
The one, the new one, the new one that went over this ye- that went over last year called me and I spent a while talking with them and, and, and they were all good. They're going to send it in and be all set. Don't know what happened. The other one, this is, they don't go by it with one, once, uh, uh, they, they've gone over a few times, but this, it's a small amount. So it's just, it's not, it's not a large deal, but it's being just consistent. We always do this, it's just being consistent, so we're trying to, and and I, I really don't like being punitive with the, with the penalties, but it's really the only thing that gets our attention in, in some cases, so um I, I'm, I'm happy to send them another letter and, and.
Were they warned about it in the first two letters? That penalty?
Yes. The letter does say that it's.
Maybe it's. If we don't get it from you, this, by this date, we have, I'm sending you a bill.
And that's, and that's, that's fine. And that's, you know, I, these, these went out a couple months ago, so it's been, it's, it's not been a little bit, so. I think they went out February or early March, so it's not, uh, so, all right, I will take care of that.
Okay, so that, we don't need a vote, but that's guidance. Okay.
Yep. Uh, and then the last thing, we, we talked about a um, an excavation ordinance um in response to things going on, and uh Kevin called me and we talked about it for a while, and his suggestion was to make it a part of our streets sidewalk ordinance rather than its own separate one.
Yeah.
So I've given the Highway Committee uh an updated draft of the streets sidewalk ordinance, which now includes that in there. Dave reviewed the language. He's happy. Um, so that's for you guys to look at and.
Does that mean we should probably have a committee meeting before our next meeting?
The uh, the Highway Committee agenda list is perpetually the longest one, and it just is just a.
Bet your water and sewers in there, something.
Uh, it is. It's okay.
Finance and personnel are meeting. Fire is meeting.
We can, we should, um, so just refresh my memory on the procedure going forward.
To adopt that?
Yes.
We, the, the whole board will get a chance, well, you guys will look at it.
Right.
We, 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 the committee, the committee looks at it, makes some changes, bring it to the board, see if there's any changes. It goes to uh an attorney to be reviewed to make sure it's legal, and then we can adopt it, and then it starts a sixty-day clock. The uh private fire hydrant ordinance, the clock is May eleventh, so it's like next week, it's becomes effective. We've, we've got the sixty-day clock is up, so.
And you said Kevin is working?
No.
No.
Yeah, no. His suggestion was to.
Put it together.
Put it, make it one rather than, which is fine, so it's.
It's all in one place, which really.
It does. It does. So it's added at the end of that.
Yeah. Uh, Kirk, now and Dave were conversing, we tried to meet between now and the twentieth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got to check into that other little overage thing that I mentioned.
Oh, yeah, that, I believe that's a clerical error.
I think so.
Yeah, that is all the things I have.
Okay, on my desk, I have a, a letter from Jason Bathelon. Attention Board of Rutland Town, I, Jason Bathelon, would like to be part of the TAC Committee and be the re- representative of Rutland Town.
Tag.
Yeah, tag. Um, and I spoke briefly with Dave. Dave has been, um, he's offered to coach Jason. I don't know if you guys want to take a look at or consider it and make a recommend or.
Anybody that's willing to volunteer for a position ranks pretty highly on my list of people. Because they're hard to come by.
Transportation counselor or something.
Sure. Transportation area?
That's advisory.
Advisory council, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So is there a motion?
Some more.
Second.
Motion has been made in the second to appoint Jason Bathelon to the TAC Committee um on transportation issues under the Regional Committee, I think. um, on transportation issues under the regional committee, I think.
Yeah, Regional Planning.
Rut- Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero, so. Yes. Six twenty, okay. Um, now, a couple of things, so let me go through our, do you have anything else, Bill?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, action items, uh, we did A. The one thing we haven't done is discuss the draft regional plan and I put it on the agenda because you remember two weeks ago or one week ago, um, we heard from Stephanie and the draft regional future land use map was presented to us. It raised some questions I um, about the, because we are basically the town in the county that has the um, what transitional area, growth area. And there were a couple of, I will say, I also pinpointed um, a area down on Creek Road that's next to mine and I did my own. I I wrote in not as a select board member or on behalf of the select board, but I just said I I object to this use and gave the reasons why, um, including a notice of alleged violation. Yeah, really, um.
Yeah, so there was a couple of things Kurt mentioned now and you guys, we looked at some of the, I guess it's a yellowish colored areas that we might want to see expanded. Is is that within our, I guess, scope of what we're doing?
I think they said.
An area on South Main Street.
Areas, the 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 boundary lines, we they were open to.
It sounded like we could try.
Right. Yes.
They might not accept it, but we can try.
Yeah, for, um, what is, I can't remember what the yellow wasn't, I left that.
Uh, that's transitional.
Yeah.
Which is like the commercial developable.
Yeah, there's a section down on.
Pretty much want to extend that almost down the railroad right away.
She said you could change some of the boundaries, but not the designations, like.
Right.
Yeah.
They were they were they were.
Yeah.
Which which is interesting because when you change a boundary, you are encroaching on another designation. So it's kind of like.
She's just meant you can't make up new ones.
Right, yeah, you can't change what they mean, yeah.
Yeah.
So tell me again, give me the narrative. Do you do you want, who wants to write in? To, I mean, I sort of know Logan a little bit, so I I wouldn't mind doing it, but tell me what.
So I I guess, I don't know how to explain on a drawn-out map, I guess. Unless you got like parcel IDs to try to add it in, but.
Um, so the transitional.
Hey, want me to take my pen up there? I can I can draw it.
Yeah, actually, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the way to do it. What worth?
Yes.
First draft, you gotta get, you gotta nail this.
Hey, I do crossword puzzles in ink. That's how brave I am.
Oh, probably something.
That's that area where basically, um, the hot, the John Deere garages.
So we're extending that zone down to the Route Four bypass, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're dr- down past the bypass to part of the dire property.
Okay.
And around to Middle Road.
Yeah, kind of follows the property, the town line.
I like that. Yeah, yeah, you can really bring it right down to the town line.
Yeah.
Or what it is.
I mean, because.
It's just right, right now, I mean, they're, these two pieces are on the market for commercial use.
I know.
We would like to do that. And then there was Post Road. See, this has the transitional infill had some stuff to do with municipal water and sewer being available.
Yes.
And there's.
Both on Post Road.
Post Road.
It's kind of a parcel in here that could get developed into something someday. That has water and sewer access.
So I had a phone call about that today and yes, there's a water line, but the water line comes from the school and it's last thing you got from Robert Parkwood that we reached the capacity of the water line.
Yeah, there's also the city valve yard down here that.
Right.
That could get tied.
The line, so I.
Two or twenty, two or three twenty-inch mains there.
Yeah.
Um, so what I did when I did mine was I, I basically put this put the map in and then I drew my own line and pointed to where, so I'll do the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's kind of, I mean, somewhere here.
Okay.
You know, there's some wetlands.
In between that.
There's some wetlands that almost it should follow the wetland buffers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but.
Cause in some respects, that would help with um, diars want to do with their property.
Yeah, and there's a.
And it fits, it fits everything else that's there. That that's a bit, it fits everything else that's there.
Yeah, that's, that's what we want that area to be.
Oh, this is right on.
It's like right right across from town school.
Okay, oh, okay.
I mean, that's all I kind of saw.
And that has water.
Has water and sewer, that's, that's easily accessible. I mean, you, you can see because they they kind of ran it up there. It just needs to get.
Alright, and one of the things that I was thinking of for these, there was something in there, but she made the point and no strip development. Well, frankly, it is strip development because that's all we've got in Rutland Town and we might, we're just infilling what's already there, so.
Yeah, and that's where we want that.
Yes.
We want all that down there.
What is on the the on the other side of Route Seven down there, it shows where G E is and all of that's already in that area, so.
Yeah, that's all the malls all in it.
All that.
Here, this little piece here, anything up this way?
Uh, Route Four is pretty much.
Anything, what, no, we did say something, no, you were saying what the limits were for the.
That's a little village district.
The village district and we can't.
That ties our, that doesn't really do much for us.
Okay.
And then this, I find they kind of, this is all residential and they still got in infill, which, whatever.
Already there, yeah.
I guess.
Built, yeah. In Mill Village.
Yeah, that's for it, right?
What, why is that?
They're excavating, what is that about, do you know?
That's the solar panels.
That's what I thought.
Solar, yeah.
Now is that property?
Thomas's.
Okay.
Thomas, they sold that though, right?
Yeah, it was Thomas's, yeah, they sold it.
So this this, they sold that parcel.
To who?
It's Post Road Solar.
Yeah, it's a company that bought.
Oh, okay.
I think they bought what was left available there.
Yeah.
That's been in the works for three years.
No, no, I just wondered, I saw it and I said.
Yes, oh, the other thing I did was compare it with our town.
You don't remember that conversation, Karen?
Huh?
That conversation came up that, well, it's prime ag land and that was about as far as I let Barb get.
But still, it's residential.
That horse left the barn when they did the other panels behind, but dairy barn up there, don't, don't use that argument.
Yeah.
No, I don't have, I don't have a problem. Beats there.
They they disturbed a couple of arrowheads, so I'm sure. But.
Well, I'm sure they did because I have a registered piece on my land.
Yeah.
It's registered with the state and then I have this, if you come up my driveway, there's this big huge mound.
Alright, that'll do it.
So Jimmy Carby brought his brother-in-law over who's into Indian artifacts. And he claims that's a burial mound. So I stray right away from, you know? I don't wanna, I don't wanna wake up Pocahontas.
Cindy.
I mean, other way, I mean, I'm kind of okay map. I mean, I don't know how much you're gonna change, like.
No, but we've launched, well, the other thing I did when I was raising the issue, I compared it with what our town plan had.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know if I'll I'll take a look at what our town plan, future land use map is, it's less detailed than this.
Growth in an area where we have growth.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, you know, they used to worry about sprawl.
Yeah.
Moving out, but we're not really doing that.
Did that.
What's that?
I mean, we, we have it because we have no center, so there was nothing to spread from.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know, and you can't, and I don't think we should be tied to what the city does. You know, because even though, you know, like when they wanted to build, what really bothered me is when they wanted to build the car repair shop in that field where they're putting solar panels. And all of the hurdles they had to go through.
Oh, yeah.
And ended up costing us that that facility. I mean, it was nothing.
Ended up building us or we are building a sidewalk to help with that issue in the future.
One in when, you know, and you know, we've talked about some infrastructure projects and one of the things that I think would help in in it's something I brought up before is that the um, army uh, the the milit- that base, the building up there.
Yeah.
They ran a ten-inch main directly from the city's twenty to that property. And at some point, the town should look at extending that main to Route Seven. It'll it'll have a lot of, it would actually help the city with their water flow because their end, we're we're, they're getting into some small pipes up by Paul's Cleaners and having the main um, potentially water to the public safety building eventually. There there's a lot of area up there that could be helped by that. The sewer is already there, so we're not really adding something. But it's just.
Well, that's, I mean, that's basic planning way back when I took planning classes that was.
Trying to keep everything, yeah.
You, you know, where you put the services, the water sewer, that's where development goes. So then if you think where do we want it, then you extend like rent, like rent, you know, Ranberry Road.
Right.
Okay, um, so E is reviewing the draft alarm ordinance once feedback from the police department is received.
The chief swore to me he'd get back to me and he went on vacation.
Deputy chief is here, so, okay, that's still on our agenda, alright. Any other new items? Anybody got anything new?
I have just a question for Bill.
Yeah.
The glitch with the door locks.
It's, we're getting closer. We we made, we made some, we made some very good progress today. Um, I I I hope to have an answer tomorrow morning. It's, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're making, we we are, we are making forward progress.
Uh, you know, Bill gave us the the his rundown of what we were doing and it's more the monitoring of the individual locks and the cost per lock. And and then there was some pushback that they don't want to honor that to an end user, that we need to go through a vendor.
It sounds like they ran into, they ran into some some backend problems.
Yeah, so Bill and I had a discussion about it and he's trying to navigate this minefield to get us where we thought we were going to be a month and a half ago.
I know, and we are, we are getting, we are getting closer, we really are, so, yes.
Well, for those that, why this hasn't all happened and all the locks haven't been changed, this is kind of the glitch before.
The answer, if the answer we all hope and pray for comes tomorrow, uh, we may be done next week.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Um, just in case, um, Carrie had shared this with, I think Matt and I a while or back April twenty ninth. Capital Improvement Fund balance at that time was eighty-three thousand two eighty-two, so we're.
And we spent about twenty-three thousand of that. For the last two change orders for the public safety building. And I hopefully that's all underway. I notified everybody the next day.
Thank you. Alright, so that takes care of new items. Update on committee meetings, we did that, the police, we heard from rec police committee. Was there anything else on the police committee that we should mention? That, that I can.
I I will slightly follow up from what we already discussed in a previous meeting.
Yeah, and we voted on, okay, last meeting. Alright, update the select board project list, there it is. Um, hey, I was thinking, um, you know, we're supposed to be doing something in twenty twenty-six to commemorate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of America's independence, right? And I was thinking, given all of the historic nature, that we try and get the pocket park in some semblance without going after big grant money or stuff, alright? So with your indulgence, let me work on a few things with the planning commission maybe?
Alright.
Alright.
We put a lot of time and effort into it, we don't want it to go by the wayside.
I don't want it to go by the wayside, yeah. Okay, so that could be our thing. Um, and board to meet an executive session, no need for that, anything else? Kurt?
Move to Jerry.
Been made and seconded to a jury. Please say aye.